Is a meeting conducted in the public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off your and silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishanabee people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishanabee people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on the land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of the land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call. Courtney?
Dana Coughlin?
Here.
Tim Otterer?
Here.
Willine Pengel?
Here.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Jessica Jernigan?
Here.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
All right, next is the approval of the agenda. Does anything have any, anything that they wanted to add to it tonight or any changes that they've created? Okay, not seeing any. Next is the superintendent, or sorry, superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. On our agenda, we do have the Student Board of Education Representative Report, but because it's summer break, she will not be here this evening. So our first report under Superintendent Reports is the annual athletic update with Mr. Jim Conway. Thanks for being here, Jim.
Good evening, all. Yeah, it's my pleasure again after a different athletic season to report to you, and we're still smiling, so that's a good thing. So I'll briefly go over the report. I believe everyone has it in front of you. Another successful season for Euler Athletics with everything that was handed to us. I have to say, I think the kids, the kids really responded very well and in a very strange way, I think this, this whole experience was a good educational learning tool for them. Specifically, when we had to, when the MHSAA mandated that we COVID test the kids, just how they handled it, you know, whether you believe in the test or not, it's how they handled it and how they, how they helped each other. It was just a really neat experience to be on the front line and see that. And this was, this was through sixth graders, through 12th graders. So it was, it was, it was very interesting, but I, I have to give the kids an A+ on, on how they handled things and certainly appreciate that. I'm sure it's something that they will never forget in their high school and middle school careers as they look back. But athletic facts here. We continue to hopefully do the right thing here. As you can see, we offer 16 sports, 13 offerings for the boys and 13 offerings for the girls. We offered 40 teams and that was split across. We finally had a freshman girls' basketball team for the first time in six, seven years, and that was successful, so that was wonderful. That pulled us up to 20 girls' teams and equaled the 20 boys' teams. So as you can see, 38% of our current student body participate in at least one sport. We feel good about that. Down maybe a tick. We've been in the 40s, you know, the low 40s. There were times that, you know, we were a little bit closer, you know, to 45, 46, but sign of the times, I think, and talking to my colleagues and looking at numbers, you know, we're right there where we should be, and you can see that. One credit, more credit, this is my time where I can credit people actually, is we continually employ and we're fortunate to have a lot of Mount Pleasant Public School employees coach our kids. And we know coaching is teaching, so when you can get teachers to coach, that, you know, that's what you want. We also have, you know, I'll pick on Mr. Windrow, you know, he's, he's been here, you know, for four decades and we're very fortunate, he's in the halls every day with our kids and, you know, he, he coaches, you know, in two of our sports, which is fantastic. So as you can see, of the 40 sports, we had 28 of them are coached by full-time Mount Pleasant Public School employees. And I will tell you across the state, that is a, that is a huge number. I mean, many, many, many school districts struggle to find coaches, let alone employees that coach. I was in an MHS, or I was in a Saginaw Valley League meeting this morning, and as of this morning, there are 37 head girls' basketball coaching openings in the state of Michigan. 37 schools are looking for head girls' basketball coaches. And then, you know, across the board, you can see that. So believe it or not, coaches do not fall out of trees, we don't grow them. So when we get good ones, we, we certainly want to embrace that and, you know, thank them for all their efforts. You can see the percentages there of the kids. The ninth graders, 38%, 10th graders, 37%, 11th graders, 37%, and 12th graders is 41%. This was, generally that number will decline as kids get older. Part of it is when you get to the varsity level, you know, unfortunately, we do cut kids based on roster size. So the 41% in a senior class is, that's been higher than normal, so I felt very, very strong about that, and they had a good year. And maybe it was because some of them couldn't play last year that, you know, they said, hey, I'm gonna go out, you know, I'm gonna go out with some Euler pride and play my senior year. So we're fortunate to have that. One thing we're very proud of again is the academic summary. As you can see, our, the Saginaw Valley League recognizes kids 3.3 or better or higher cumulative is our, is our all academic for all league, and those kids get a certificate at their banquet. But very proud, the females again lead the way at 73% of those kids that participate in athletics were 3.3 and better, and then 51% of the boys. And I do tell the boys that stat probably once or twice a year during the school year, so, but feel very good about that where the kids are progressing academically. The next page there, slide, is just the sports offering. As you can see, cross-country, we'll start with varsity boys, and then in the parentheses, that's where we finished in an extremely competitive league. You know, when people see that, they say, oh, boy, you know, seventh, fifth, you know, fourth, third, sixth. Well, I can tell you this, we, we, we just finished the, the spring state championships last weekend. Grand Blank, who's in our conference, just won the boys' baseball state championships, Division One, as well as the boys' state championships. And then you have the Midland Dows, where tennis and swimming and that type of thing. And this is an extremely competitive athletic league, and we like that actually. So that, you can see there. One note, the winter, the winter was, was reduced obviously due to the pandemic where, and we're gonna talk hockey here in a little bit, but generally, we would play 25 regular season hockey games. This year, we played seven. Basketball, you play 20. I think we end up playing, we won, we won a game or two in the districts for boys and won one in girls, so I think we end up playing 13 or 14 of those games. So the winter was definitely shortened, but at least the kids had an opportunity to compete, be with their friends, be with their colleagues, and kind of get away from, you know, the real world and, you know, represent Mount Pleasant. So, and then the spring, spring went very well. I was just talking earlier today, very interesting with the spring, we did not have one rain out in spring sports. And some of you that have had kids that were spring athletes understand Michigan springs can be very, very difficult to work with. So the best news, I guess, this, this sports year was our spring. The weather was phenomenal. If you remember, the first three weeks in April were fantastic. And then May stayed dry, got a little chilly there in the middle, but, you know, the softball parents and the track parents and soccer parents brought an extra blanket, but, but it stayed dry, so that, that helped the athletic director, because making up these games becomes very difficult, especially, you know, with, with the virus going around. So as you see at the bottom there, the Dick Leach Award, that is for each sport, based on how many teams play, based on where you finish, you get X amount of points, and then that accumulation of points at the end is added. So we finished ninth for the boys and sixth for the girls, which is about where we were last year. I think the girls might have improved a spot or two from last year, so heading in the right direction. As always, you can see the MHSAA, two things. Number one, you know, our, our location is wonderful to host athletic events, you know, across the state with the Michigan High School Athletic Association, but then also our facilities continue to lend more emails today about what we host next year, and I'm still not very smart, and click yes, and one of these years, I'll, I'll wise up and say no, let somebody else do it. But it, it's a chance to show off kind of our, our neighborhood, if you will. So we will continue to host those events. A couple of them were hosted at, at CMU, so we still have that relationship. Two weeks ago, we could go Saturday, we hosted a super region for baseball, and then last Tuesday, we hosted the girls soccer, or the girls softball quarterfinals. So that will continue. Multiple sport participation, this has been an emphasis with the MHSAA. We're probably on the third or fourth, fifth year of, of a heavy emphasis. We try to talk with kids, I try to motivate coaches to share student athletes, if you will. We are certainly in an age of specialization as you look across the country. Everybody wants that, you know, that Division One scholarship. We know less than 2% of kids get a Division One scholarship. We also know now that it's gonna make it tougher because the Supreme Court ruled this morning that now college athletes will be paid. And now they wanna know, you know, how much and how they're gonna pay and that type of thing. So, so now there's, there's parents there that not only see the, the scholarship out there, but potentially where their kids can may get paid to play sports if, if they're certainly good enough. So the numbers dictate there, pretty decent there, number, number of boys that play two or more sports, 101, and then the girls that play two or more sports, 75. We will continually work on that, successful athletic programs. We're a big school, a little over 1,000 kids, which sounds big, but, but when we start specializing and kids only play one sport, that shrinks your pool down quite, quite dramatically. So we need to, Mount Pleasant, and I wish more schools did it, we really need to share athletes from a winter to a spring to a fall, that type of thing. It can be done, and we constantly talk about that with coaches. We, we try to work with each other, and it's, it's difficult. And not only with that, but then you're fighting the AAUs and the clubs and that type of thing. Well, we'll keep going, we'll keep going. Just a few of the kids here, I always add, and again, I have to caveat this with, these are, you know, the athletes known to be competing, and already, I realize I left off, Andrew Funnel should be under baseball, he's gonna join Michael Coughlin at Mid-Michigan. So congratulations to, to Andrew. This is, this is the second year in a row, we are sending a student athlete to the Ivy League, which is fantastic. Of course, Tyler Huneeman last year went to, he's at Harvard playing football, but hasn't played yet, of course, because of the pandemic. But McKenzie will join him in the Ivy, and I, and I know they're friends, and, and they've already, you know, started the trash talk between them and this and that, so it'll be neat to have, have two of those out there. And you can see, you know, across the board, you know, kids, kids from different sports are gonna continue on, which is fantastic. Any questions on athletics or?
No, but I'd like to thank you and your team and the trainers for doing all of the extra work you had to do this year, which was a significant load of work, so thank you for all of that.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and our trainer, Kathleen, she did, she did a fantastic job, and, and we had, we had, you know, teachers in the building step up and help with our COVID team, and, I need to thank the COVID team downtown, that's certainly not easy when I call, and, you know, we had a positive, then all of a sudden, their day gets extremely busy, so. But, but I think overall, it was, we got through it, and, and let's not do it again, you know? If, if the board has the power to do that, let's not do it again. So Jen, can I, can I, can we talk hockey at this point?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm gonna bring up Mr. Bob Weisenberger here. We, we've had hockey for 13 years. It has been solely a Mount Pleasant Public School hockey program, meaning if you didn't attend Mount Pleasant High School, you couldn't play for our hockey program. The last couple of years, the numbers have dipped, which is unfortunate, so we are, we are now at the point where we have to look at alternatives. The easy thing to do would be to say, no more hockey. Nobody wants that. Your competitors, we're, we're competitors. We would like to see this hockey program continue. Our, our opponents in the Saginaw Valley League wants to see hockey continue. The MHSAA wants to see us continue. So we are, we are investigating, looking into a cooperative program, which is allowable by the MHSAA. Cooperative program basically means we will select certain schools, neighboring schools, that the kids would still go to the neighboring schools, but they could play hockey for Mount Pleasant. Whether the name changes or not, that's something that, you know, we, we work down the road. But that's, that's, that's kind of the State of the Union where we are. We, we need bodies in skates to continue this, this going. And, you know, Bob and his crew have done a good job of research. I will say this, and I'll let Bob speak. 44% of the teams that play high school hockey are now co-op in the state of Michigan. And these schools are bigger than us. East Kentwood, who has a hockey rink, if you've been to East Kentwood, but it's like a community college, it's a very large facility, they co-op a hockey program, and, and many, many do. So we've, we've, me, tried to hang in there as long as possible, but we're to the point now where we, we feel like we have to discuss a co-op to kind of a survival. So I'll, I'll get out of the way and let Bob talk real, real quickly and, and fill you in on the state of hockey.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity here. It's kind of a bigger picture thing. I'm, I'm a longtime advocate of, of the recreation sportsplex here in Mount Pleasant, and as an integral part of that sportsplex that adds a lot, I think arguably adds quite a bit to this community, and built with, you know, no tax dollars, heavy, heavy philanthropy and effort to, to make that a unique thing for all of us in the community. Ice skating was the genesis of the program, whether it's figure skating, youth skating, or Mount Pleasant High School hockey. 13 years ago, we petitioned the Mount Pleasant School Board, and they graciously allowed us the opportunity, saying, understand this, you know, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be funding for the Mount Pleasant High School hockey. It's a pay-to-play sport. And we had all the numbers, and they had us go out and raise an additional $60,000 to $70,000 from people just giving money to support area skating. Because once they get into high school, they start, we start to lose the numbers. And just getting a little tired of playing for grandpa and grandma and, and mom and dad, and so we've held those numbers for 13 years. We've been Mount Pleasant High School Euler Hockey. But what's most important for the area skaters and is to be able to play area high school hockey. And right now, our numbers, you know, won't sustain that. The numbers of skaters remains static, it remains steady, whereas many places throughout the country, those numbers are down, but we're remaining higher. It's just the number of kids that live in Mount Pleasant, or go to Mount Pleasant High School, Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So kids from Alma, Shepherd, Ithaca, Beale City, Sacred Heart, Clare, Shepherd are part of the skating program because other rinks haven't survived, we have survived. And it's, ice skating and high school hockey is integral to the ice rinks physical return. And in turn, the ice rink is important to the physical nature of the sportsplex. So I'm here not only as a 60-year-plus Mount Pleasant resident and a Mount Pleasant High School graduate and a Mount Pleasant High School hockey enthusiast, but I'm here for the rec center. I'm here for the sportsplex, and I'm just delighted that you would at least hear me out and hear Jim out and, and consider allowing us to be a co-op, to gather enough players to not put our kids. This year was the first year we kind of dipped below a, a, a real tipping point. And so for 13 years, we've sustained ourselves, and now the numbers, a lot of people have moved to the, you know, outside the school district and have their kids go in there. Bottom line is that I appreciate you thinking about it, and I'm here for the rec center as well as for the kids and the area ice skating. So thank you for hearing me out, appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, certainly.
Um, are the student athletes who are currently involved in hockey and their families, do they support this move? Do they wanna keep playing as a co-op?
Absolutely. There, there are 140 high school, high school hockey teams in the state. 60 of them are co-op. Jim will tell you the exact numbers maybe, but five years ago, there maybe was two dozen co-ops. Make no mistake, this is a survival issue, and we have kept the cost the same, and the families have endorsed this area skating. If you, I'm certain, if I asked you guys if you've ever been to the, to the rec center out there, you'd say yes or driven by it. It, it rocks. That place is busy, and, and the families truly support. Our numbers in the amateur hockey association are very level. We've done a whale of a job enticing people, and when skating rinks operate part-time in Gladwin or other communities that don't have them, they, they have their kids come here. So yes, I would say the families genuinely support the idea of co-op. In fact, Jim will tell you with a half-smile on, he's, he's had to tell people no for 13 years, we aren't gonna have it because they've been all asking for it so that their kids can play. But it's been a good ride, it's just kind of met its, met its day, and we need, we really truly need to keep it going for the physical strength of the sportsplex there.
So I guess I have a follow-up question as well, I'm right here. The advantage of the cooperative program seems pretty obvious from a recruitment point of view. What are the, is there any drawbacks to having such a cooperative program that you didn't go there earlier?
No. Great, great question, and Jim may be a little better to address those.
I, I would say the only drawback is, and we're cognizant of, of the, the total enrollment. So the way sports works, obviously, they, they take, in hockey, there's three divisions, so they just cut it. They take the top 33% enrollment schools, and that's Division One. The, the middle 33 is gonna be Division Two, and then, and then we have been, although we're a Class A high school, we have always been in the lower hockey division. So between Bob and I and our, and our crack math skills, we think, you know, depending on which schools join and which do not, that we would, we would stay in that division, we would move up a division, which on paper should be tougher, but we really, we're really willing to sacrifice that just so these kids can play hockey and continually represent, you know, our high school. So that's really the only drawback. I've talked to a lot of cooperative programs in the last month or so. You know, there's certainly gonna be a philosophy and, and, you know, our eligibility rules are different than Shepherd's eligibility rules, which are different than Beal's eligibility rules, but teams that have co-opt have been able to navigate and massage all that and work through it. So I think we can handle that, but it's, it's going from that Division Three up, up a level would probably be the only drawback. But this guy's a competitor, and he says, let's do it, so.
Thank you.
I believe, Jim, our plan was at this point to come back to the board at our July meeting with specific information regarding what schools we would be co-opping with, and then ask for official board approval at that point.
That's correct.
If I'm not mistaken, MHSAA has a deadline of August?
August 15th, we'd have to alert the, the MHSAA that we're joined into a cooperative program.
Okay.
And then, and then we took the, I took the step this morning with the league, and the league is aware of it, and they're aware of this meeting and the July 17th meeting, and then I will, based on that, the results of that meeting, I will let them know what direction we go.
Does anyone have any other questions for Jim or Bob?
No, but thank you for all of your hard work, a lot of effort and time to that, to see those kids be able to still succeed at a sport.
Yep. End of the day, it's all fun, still a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under my report is the PSC Annual Report, and here to present that is Erin King, PSC Co-Chair. Thank you for being here, Erin.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I think you all have the report linked, and we're given slides also, so I'm gonna go through that report now. And the Professional Study Committee, PSC, has many different members, and you'll see that on your third slide. And I'm the chair this year, which is kind of a unique position for me to be in, prior being a teacher. And generally, this role is held by a teacher. And just in light of this school year, it was tricky to have somebody move into that role mid-year, so I continued in this spot and then will remain a member next year, but there will be a teacher that will take over the role of chair next year. And you can see the members there. There's generally a lower L representation. There is two, Allison Carr and Katie Hoyle. And then we have high school representation as well with Kristy Bolts that you can see listed next. We have Wendy Hoyle from the middle school. And then on the other side, on the right-hand side, is our admin that you can see listed there, along with Wendy Apple as our ex-officio through MPEA. The next slide shows the Professional Study Committee process, so it kind of shows you both sides of what happens through the MPEA realm, and then what happens on the admin side and how the two sides work together to make sure there is accurate representation on the committee, so that curriculum isn't just chosen by the teachers without being brought to a committee and then to the board, and vice versa, not just chosen by the admin and then brought to the board. So it really is wonderful, and I think a unique process that our school has, that our district has, that allows our experts, which are our teachers, to make sure that they're bringing curriculum forth and doing the study that's involved with that, and then bringing that to the PSC Committee and then to the board. A district-wide curriculum provides a framework for what all students are expected to know, do, and be able to perform. It is also vital that the curriculum is aligned across grade levels and that it addresses the requirements identified through both Michigan and national standards for teaching and learning. And that's a goal from PSC that we really try to hold true to. PSC supports the Board of Ed in lots of different ways, and they're listed there. So a lot of, at the beginning of the year, each year, there will be a new staff, and they'll say, what is PSC? They'll hear that, and so we'll send out an email to the whole staff that will say, okay, this is a, what PSC stands for, this is what PSC does, and this is why we have it. And that's kind of what all of those bullets outline as well. The key within the Professional Study Committee is it's a collaborative group that works together. It's kind of that bridge, teaching staff, admin coming together to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids and following our state and national standards, and then making sure that we're providing a rigorous curriculum for our students. There are many ways that staff and community members participate in this process, and these include serving as a task force or study team member, being a member of the building's school improvement team, leading or participating in grade level or department meetings, using best practice research for instructing students, basing instructional decisions on student data, serving on PSC, sharing ideas for PSC, and supporting curriculum work as members of the Board of Education. And we're so thankful for this process, and as I said, it's unique to our district. This is the third district that I worked in, and I think until you've worked somewhere else, you don't see the difference that a program like this can make, or a team like this can make, and I have seen it firsthand. The next part of our, our annual report is the Curriculum Cycle Focus Area, and Secondary Business and Technology is our first slide. And Secondary Business and Technology is our first slide. But before I go into that, generally, PSC presents in December, and then PSC presents again in January. This year is different because there wasn't, our process ran a little bit differently due to COVID, which you've heard 1,000 times this year. So we did not present in December because so much of our work was still continuing, and there wasn't enough to present on as there is in typical years. So this work, the Secondary Business and Technology Task Force, you've already approved. It's done. It was in the December, would have been a December report. But I still put it in here because this is the annual report. And since we didn't do a December report, I wanted to make sure this showed representation of what was completed this year. So Secondary Business and Technology Task Force. I listed everything there, but that was approved in December. And then next is the Out-of-Cycle Requests for 2021. And we have MPMS World Language Consent Form, which again was already brought to you, but I wanted to include that as yearly work. And that was the credit, no-credit option for Spanish. The next one is DK, Big Day Curriculum Journeys. And we adopted Journeys several years ago. I believe we were talking and we were thinking that it's been five years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Linda. I think this is our sixth year currently right now. We had a kind of a pilot year where we had teachers try it, and then this is our fifth year of implementation for K-5 Journeys for reading. We had Handwriting Without Tears in the past for DK, and it was working well. It wasn't that it wasn't working. However, we found that there was a component that we didn't know about prior that we tried last year that was for pre-K, or we call it in Mount Pleasant, DK. So we tried that out, and the teachers loved it. Our experts said, "This is what we want to do. This helps our students being prepared for kindergarten. They're using the same language, seeing the same components, but at their level." So we decided this was best. Then checked in with you, and this was the route that we wanted to go. So that was purchased in December 2020. Their Curriculum Cycle Focus Areas that are still in progress are the Elementary Secondary World Studies Task Force. And the charges listed there, this group really hit the ground running this year. And they were ready to make sure, okay, we want to know what our charge is right away, even before you're ready to give it to us, because we're ready to do the work. They had standards that were adopted in February last year, and we know that COVID kind of put a halt on some of that work. So this task force continued working, and they're meeting, even this summer, I think they met a little bit on June 9th, and then they're continuing to meet, and will finish up this work hopefully next year in November. You can see the charge outlined there. There were a few additions to this charge. Generally, there's a charge that's issued, and it has kind of the same components. You can see pacing guides, common assessments, course description, syllabus, all of those things. We added a few other pieces in. We wanted them to take a look at diversity. We wanted them to take a look at cross-curricular alignment and look at integration across grade levels also, making sure there's alignment with middle school and high school. The next slide shows the end of their charge, and we wanted them to answer the following in their report. How is diversity addressed in your content area with regard to culture, gender, race, or religion? And then we did discuss with them the board policy also. And then, when I met with them, they had quite a few questions about what this looked like, and the conversation's been awesome. And they're continuing this work. And middle school is meeting with high school to make sure that we're covering everything that we can in the best way that we can for all of our students. The task force timeline is listed there as well. And as I said, our hope is that they would finish next year and maybe present to us in October, and then we'd be ready to present to you in November so that they'd be ready for that course book if they have any changes, when it needs to be ready for January 2022. I always say that backwards. I hope that was right. And then our elementary, we would like them to be wrapped up in March 2022. And then they would come to us then. We would come to you probably in April. And then it would be ready for that following year in case there needed to be items purchased or things like that. We always want to make sure that's ready so that over the summer, teachers could get acclimated with that material. And MPHS had a science task force preview charge given, which is not common. This is my fifth year or sixth year on PSC, and I don't think we've given a preview charge before. But again, we have a group, just like World Studies, that was ready to hit the ground running. And we weren't quite ready at PSC because their cycle starts next year. But they said, "Hey, we want to work this summer. We really are ready to make sure that this summer we can put the work in, and maybe during the school year, it's a little bit trickier to have that time." So we issued them a preview charge just for the high school, and the middle school charge will mirror that. But the middle school wasn't quite ready at this point to work this summer, and then they will work on their traditional schedule next year. So you can see an issue of that task force preview charge there, and then also their timeline. Generally, the secondary follows a timeline of January to the following December. And then elementary follows the school year. And the reason for that is just in case there's changes with courses, they need to be ready to be put into that course book in January so that students can schedule class well. So the counselors don't go quite as crazy when they're scheduling classes for students. We have points of pride for 2021. It was, if I'm being 100% honest with you, it was really, really difficult this year to be completely transparent with communication and make sure I was juggling all of the balls that I was trying to juggle. And I worked really hard. I know I dropped lots of them, and once I did, I tried to fix that and make sure we were meeting. So I really feel like communication is a priority, and it was a priority especially this year because we knew people are being asked to do more than they've ever been asked to do. And we all feel like there's less time, even though there's the same amount of time. So we really tried hard to make sure there were email updates that were going out after meetings. And that way, staff knew what was happening within the PSC realm. And after each email, there were lots of questions, which is awesome. That shows people are reading what's coming to them, and that shows that they're interested in the work that's affecting them as Mount Pleasant Public School employees. So communication is a point of pride. As well as face-to-face meetings, again, that was really difficult this year due to scheduling and COVID and just the logistics of the position that I'm in now and having time to, I don't have a prep period built in, which sounds amazing. If someone wants to implement that and give a principal a prep period, that sounds amazing. But it doesn't quite work that way. So it was really difficult for me during just certain times of the day to be able to meet. But that was a priority, to make sure that we're able to meet face-to-face. That's always better than an email. That's always better than a phone call. And I think we all feel like it's better than Zoom at this point, is a face-to-face meeting. If you look on the next slide, it'll actually be two, thank you, Jennifer. On your page 28, that's the Curriculum Cycle Review. And all we do each year is just roll that over. So you'll see 1920 disappear next year, and then we'll just add 2425 onto the right of that. And there are small tweaks that we've made over the years because we wanted to make sure that one particular year didn't have a heavy year of study with really, really heavy curriculum areas all being at the same time. For example, we wouldn't want, if you look at 2021, we wouldn't want World Studies to be also with English Language Arts, to be also with math. Those are all three very meaty areas that take a significant amount of time and cost more money because you're involving more people. So we really tried to spread that out, and have only made small tweaks over the years. So I'm sure you're familiar with this if you've been on the board for a little bit. And if you're not, this is something that stays the same, and it will just add another year onto the right after this year. So the recommendations for approval sound a little goofy also this year because really, you already did this in December. But again, to represent our year, the annual report lists these items, which is approved Secondary Business and Technology Task Force report, and approved the Journeys Big Day Curriculum, which you've already done both of those things. So if you look on Slide 31, there is no cost, which is a rejoice moment, right? It says zero. Ginger's smiling at me with her eyes above her mask, saying, "Thank you that there's $0, right?" And if you look, Big Day was already approved in December. And that's the reference there that's cost. And then everything else, there wasn't a cost. But I wanted to list that, as I said, for the annual report. So we just are so thankful for this committee and for the work that they do and the time that they put in. It isn't just one meeting a month. There's lots that goes into that. Many of the members are working with task forces and having to field those emails and go to those meetings and be the liaison for PSC. And it takes an immense amount of time, and it is just a team effort, and we appreciate all of that. Do you have any questions for me about anything that you've seen so far, anything about PSC?
I have a small question, just trying to understand your process. And so I was familiar with how you ran the PSC.
Yes.
And then I think the part I'm working through is how your task force work. And so if I understand right, and feel free to correct me.
Sure.
For a specific area, so let's just pick the one you had today, like World Studies. Is there PSC members that are assigned to the specific task force? And then build an additional group that then meets separately and then report back to PSC? Is that how that works?
Yeah, you just nailed all of it. So I'll go through that one. That's a great example because it's going on right now. So for example, there's always a liaison from PSC. So in this instance, it's our high school principal. And then we have a liaison with PSC, and then there's also PSC chairs. So we have two PSC chairs, ones at the middle school level and ones at the high school level for the secondary. And then we have two, ooh, there might be one in the elementary, but I know another admin has kind of tag teamed to help out. So I don't, on paper, I don't know if there's two or if there's one. But there's always representation across the secondary and the elementary. And then as we put this task force, or put the charge together, we try to meet as a PSC team and figure out, okay, who's going to be interested in this committee, first of all? Because you don't want to just appoint somebody if it's not an area of interest. And you want to make sure that it's someone that has leadership skills, someone that has, like I said, an interest, someone that is ready for this type of work, someone that is in that particular area. You wouldn't want a fifth-grade teacher, obviously, on the secondary committee. So we really try to pay attention to that. Once we have agreement from all of the members that we've looked at together as an admin team, reached out to principals that aren't on our committee, "Who do you think would be interested in this work? Who do you think would help us be successful?" Once we've reached out to those people and they've said yes, then the charge is issued, and the liaison meets with the task force members. In this instance, actually, Willian and I met with the task force, the secondary. And then the elementary, I did not meet with them face-to-face. Their liaison delivered the charge to them face-to-face. And that's usually what happens, is the liaison does that. Then, there's a folder within the PSC drive that holds the agendas, the minutes, the sign-ins, and all curriculum work goes there. So myself and the liaison can look and check in and make sure that everything is on target according to the timeline given in the charge. And if there's questions, we can ask them. Generally, a small update is given at the next PSC meeting, and it's just kind of carried out throughout the year. So if there was a meeting in January, then we would give an update in February. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. That does help. And so then, if I, from what you've said, if, let's say I'm a teacher and I'm interested in being in a specific task force, can I request that? Is that volunteer basis, not just by invitation?
Yeah, I don't, I think normally it happens the other way. There isn't usually somebody that says, "Hey, I want to be a part of this." Because a lot of times, teachers won't know until, "Hey, we're going to have this task force," and that's how they hear about it. So then they might say something. But usually, what has happened in my experience is, "Oh, I know that this particular teacher has an interest here. We could ask them." So it definitely is not just handpicked. It's people that will have an interest or have been plugged in in a particular area already. But I know in this World Studies example, there was someone that reached out prior and said, "Oh, I really want to be on this," which I think isn't the norm, just because usually that Curriculum Cycle Overview isn't something that I think we're all thinking of right away, where this particular teacher was, "Ooh, I know this is coming up. I really want to be on this." So that does happen. And then if someone's not on the task force, those teachers that are are expected to go out to their department and get information from their department, which then is part of the collective whole. So we have voice from everybody.
Right. That was my next question.
You're welcome.
And so then, as a board, we then have one board member that attends the PSC meetings. And this year, it's you, Dana, right? Okay. Okay, thank you. That helps.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. So building off of that strong presentation from the Professional Study Committee, excuse me, we want to move into the next topic under my report, which is the idea of really looking at our curriculum through a variety of different lenses. So over the last several months, we've heard from our community with concerns regarding curriculum, regarding what is being taught and maybe what isn't being taught, and how we could, we can address that. And so Linda and I are going to work together to go through this presentation to give you an idea of what we've been working on and how we would like to move forward under the umbrella of cultural responsiveness within our curriculum. So, you want to start, Linda?
So this fits in nicely with what Erin just presented with PSC. And I wanted to kind of review a little bit of what we've been working on in the past year. So obviously, social studies, World Studies has been a focus of our learning over the course of the 2021 school year. The pandemic has thrown that into a wrench a little bit because we couldn't gather face-to-face as much as we wanted to. And we wanted to be very thoughtful and intentional with our work, trying to not pull teachers out of the classroom on the precious days that we could have in-person instruction. So, but we did, we did task the social studies groups. I think the entire high school social studies department was actively involved in their task force. And from the beginning, we were very aware and trying to be very intentional about how diversity is currently addressed in that particular content area. The other thing that we're proud of being very actively involved in is Project Aware. And I bring that up because that kind of goes along nicely with all of our discussions about diversity. And Project Aware is an amazing opportunity that we've been a part of thanks to a very large Saginaw-Chipewa Indian Tribe grant that we were awarded at the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year. It was a $1.8 million per year grant. And with it, we've been able to give our students five counselors. So it's been amazing. You heard from Kim Funnel last week, and she mentioned Steven Wheeler in the role that he plays at Way Oasis. And so each of our buildings have the opportunity to have access to Project Aware counselors and some of the other learning that has gone along with that. In year two, we started out very strong with Project Aware, very big focus on trauma-informed. And so we were trained on resilience, and we've talked a lot about making sure our community was aware of this. And you may remember, we started out strong with a wellness tailgate. We were, it was very welcoming and positive about wellness. And that was the same year that eventually the pandemic hit. And we didn't really bring our, the progress that Project Aware brought us to full closure because we couldn't really end the year together. But we did manage to add calming corners. That was a large piece of our Project Aware funding and using those in the classroom. And we trained staff in youth first aid mental health. Almost all of our paraprofessional staff have participated in that training. And we, and all of this is part of the grant. So not just the five counselors, but a very well-laid-out expectation for professional development, professional learning for our teachers over the course of these five years. So you kind of see the plan there in front of you, the trauma-informed training for all staff. Last year, the training was excellent. However, we had to participate virtually because we weren't allowed to gather together. But midway through last year, we were able to participate in cultural training from Dr. J. Mark. And Dr. Mark's cultural training was two, three-hour sessions, one with our DK-5 staff, and then in the afternoon with our secondary staff. And so if you, on Slide four, sorry if I'm talking too fast, that is Dr. Mark's biographical information. And he has been a very, a very great asset to us as we start to go down the road of examining our cultural competence here in Mount Pleasant. And he has a very positive way of talking to all of us and kind of meeting us where we are at with our understanding of diversity and culture. So Dr. Mark is, he's been in education since 1991, and now he is a consultant at the Oakland ISD. The workshop that we all participated on February 8th, the title of it was Cultural Proficiency. And so some of those live links, if you want to dig a little bit deeper, these slides kind of walked us through different ways that we could look at our own, our own self-assessment of where we are with diversity. And the sample in the slide is, you know, "Do you see me?" And when we walk into classrooms, do we see a fair representation on our walls of all different kinds of students and disabilities, abilities, and different cultural components of our classrooms? And so as we try to bring all this together, oops, Slide six. Slide six is just another example of a cultural competence self-assessment. We all did this virtually with Dr. Mark and, you know, just kind of went through some of those questions so that we could see where we are at as individuals. No one had to report their score. But we, it was a good starting point for us to reflect on this journey. On Slide seven, I just kind of wanted to bring that back all together. Erin had mentioned that a few of our staff, that the new standards for social studies were rolled out in February of 2019. We sent a high school representative or two and a couple of, a middle school representative and an elementary representative. And when they came back, they said that the content, the new, the social studies standards had been argued about at the Department of Education for several years. And it was, you know, just a tweak here, a word there. And finally, when they were rolled out, a common thread was that very little had changed with the content. And finally, when they were rolled out, the, a common thread was that very little had changed with the content. They were, they were clearer, there were fewer standards, some were combined because there was some redundancy. But they did, the biggest emphasis was on a different approach to teaching standards, more of an emphasis on inquiry and instruction. And that was, you know, that student voice and the whole child push, which has been a big part of Michigan's top 10 and 10 with the, looking at the whole child. So when we slide two, slide eight, again, the, I like the quote from the career, the college career and civic life framework. It talks, it says there's an added emphasis on developing student skills to become active and informed citizens. The idea that as opposed to, the idea is that opposed to just learning the what, students are asked to use critical and deeper thinking to examine the why. And then at the very bottom, organizational changes to the standards encourage students to examine multiple perspectives. So I think that all fits in with what we've been, we've been discussing lately. So I've been doing all the talking. Do you want to?
Well, sure, I can jump in here. So, so the idea would be as we move forward and we look at what Erin just presented with the academic departments that would be up for review in the 21, 22 school year, we would like to create an additional task force that would take an intentional, intensive look at our curriculum under the lens of culturally responsive curriculum. So Linda highlighted for us here the role that PSC plays in developing our curriculum, which works really nicely with what Erin just presented to give you an idea of how that structure fits in.
On this slide, I wanted to mention that our local Greshad Isabella RESD is going to focus on social studies next year as well. And over the course of my time with Mount Pleasant, we have participated in math essentials. So we get together with other professionals from other districts and kind of compare notes on kind of those standards that are absolutely non-negotiable. In fact, I think one of, I think math is called non-negotiable standard and language arts is the high essential literacy standards. They want to take that approach with all of the Greshad Isabella RESD now that the standards are out and then kind of come up with another list of, you know, these non-negotiable standards that we kind of all have in common in our local area. We, we really want to be a part of that.
And then the study year for English Language Arts is also beginning in 21, 22. We included for you a few links for different curriculum resources. I know these are resources that some of you are already aware of, but just some publications that might help guide our work. The idea would be a proposed timeline that we would like to work to establish a task force yet this summer. And the task force, to Willian's question, would be representative of members of PSC and members throughout the district. We would work to make sure that all grade levels, disciplines, there's a wide variety of representation in both teachers and administrators. We would like to bring that group together, review the initial charge and scope of work and get them sort of kicked off on their work. In the fall, we believe that surveying our students, staff, our parents and our community members is a critical piece to inform this work. We already have planned to continue our professional development with Dr. Marks. And we would envision that the task force would continue meeting. Dr. Marks will be meeting with our secondary staff on October 15. And then if you see in the spring, he has a scheduled professional development with our elementary staff in February. So that's work that's already planned and will move forward. We would envision that the task force would continue meeting with the idea of bringing an update to the board in either May or June of next year. And I don't think that, I, I think two big points. First is that we want to make sure that there is a clear understanding that this work, to be done well, will, will take time. And so I'm not, I'm not meaning to say that by May or June, the work will be done. But I think that within the school year, our group should be able to come back to the board to say, this is what we've accomplished and this is where we believe we need to go next. So ideas, you know, the task force charge, some ideas that we would ask them to look at in the investigation would be use of a school, a scorecard tool to evaluate our curriculum. So how is diversity addressed in our curriculum? Are classroom libraries representative of diverse authors and characters? Are there a variety of perspectives represented in our curriculum? We begin, we believe because of the timing with ELA and World Studies, task force already up and running, those, those would be easy departments to partner with to evaluate the scorecard responses from our staff and from our community. And then really to make some recommendations for what steps are next in this review process. Again, to do this well, the work won't be free. And so that's something that we want to make sure. We're just really putting budget, budget estimates together. We believe to bring this group together, it'll likely be a group of around 15 people. So that means that we will have to pay for either extended contract pay for summer work or sub-coverage if they meet during the school year. Professional development, you know, we're not sure what else we might want to do with Dr. Marks. Right now, the professional development that he is bringing to our district is paid for through the Project Aware grant. But there is a chance that we may want to do more with Dr. Marks. And so we, we may need additional funds for that. And then ultimately, the recommendation could be that we need to purchase different curriculum. And we don't know, obviously, what those expenses would be at this time. That was meant to be sort of just a summary overview of where we're thinking we'd like to take the next steps. We recognize that there are a wide variety of opinions. And we want to support our staff and our community in moving forward together. And we feel like this is a mechanism that we have that's evaluated and continued to move our curriculum forward for the last several years. So we'd like to, under that same umbrella, continue working in that vein. I don't know if board members have questions for either Linda or I?
First of all, do we, is there any way that the public can see what's being taught by Mr. Marks? J. Mark? I mean, can we see what?
Sure.
I mean, is, is there an online of the, things he's already given?
We, we could certainly link.
See what's being taught?
Yeah, we could certainly link information. He is an employee of Oakland ISD. And so there's quite a bit of information on there.
I'd like to actually see one of his meetings that he has that he.
Okay. And you have all of that, Sheila, but you're saying.
It is in here? Where do I access it at? And where can the public access it?
Okay, so there's a link. If you scroll back. So I don't know what slide number this is, but the slide that I have pulled up here, Sheila, you see that there's a blue link in the middle? And that takes you to his agenda, to his programming. There's handouts. There are, there's all that there. And we can post that on our website.
Okay. That's the first thing. The second thing is, are we, under the circumstances that there's concern about CRT being entered into, are we having any plans to allow any parents to have any input?
Right. I remember I said that there would be surveys. We could.
I mean, actually reading the material and having some input before it comes to us.
Sure.
To that point, I, I know that we're looking at about a year from now for a final report. And I ask this with the understanding that this is totally a work in progress, but can we maybe establish some, some touchpoints throughout the year, throughout the process so that we can see, you know, where we are and how it's going? Can we get the occasional update?
Yes. So every month, Linda provides an update on PSC to the board meeting. So she will include an update for this committee every month.
Perfect. Thank you.
And so, and maybe I'll, I'll continue along the same lines. How, how can the board help in this process or support the task force for this, for this project?
And so you do have a board representative on the task force through Dana. You certainly would be invited to attend any professional development, as I've tried to always do to make sure, it was especially easy when it was virtual, but to make sure that you're aware of the times and dates of professional development. Linda, I don't know if there are other ways board members can support the task force process?
I mean, depending on if we organize, you know, more parent involvement or, you know, other outside entities on the, on the task forces, I mean, that would be something we could.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank you for putting this together. I know that you had to put this together really quickly.
Yes.
And I know that it was largely in response to, you know, things we've heard from our community. So thanks a lot.
Yeah, same. I'd like to thank you guys. I know that's a lot of quick work. I, I really like how extensive this, this project is. And I think considering what we've heard lately in our community, having something that's broader rather than really restricted to either one book, one concern, one department, I think is something that's really important. And so I actually like the fact that it's a long-term project, that we're not going to get answers in a month. And I think in a way, the, the deeper process is going to result in data that I think as a school district, we're going to be able to use much more than something short-term. I love the fact that some of what you presented, I, or maybe that's a scientist in me, but when I see it, I see data. Like you said, you know, scorecard, something that we can look at a little bit more objectively, especially on something that's so sensitive, having some data to make information on. And I, I'm, I'm hoping, I guess, next May or June, whenever that happens, that that's what we can look a little bit on, is the actual data of where we are, what are we doing? Because in maybe in some areas, we're doing more than we think and maybe in others, less than we think. And then lastly, I'm, I'm not sure if in some of the professional developments that you envision, if we can make sure there's a follow-up. In my professional experience, it's so easy to go to professional development and we get all pumped up and we leave, we're excited. But without a follow-up, it can be hard to feel supported in actually implementing some change or, and so I don't know if we can maybe build that up. And I know in the budget, you have, you have quite a bit for, I think it's this consulting. And so maybe that's what we've been here and the consulting is, is some of that, not just a one-time event, but some of that follow-up.
And I, I think that is very much Dr. Mark's model. So we have the February PD in 2021. Then there was follow-up with both secondary and elementary. Now we'll continue the follow-up with secondary and elementary. And I, I think the idea would be to bring our task force together and let those folks determine what consulting, what support, what we might need.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
I'm impressed with how well this is aligning to the mission and the vision of the district. So not that many years ago, our community got together and made some statements, some overreaching statements of what we want our community to be about, especially with this culturally competent area. There was a lot of conversation and there were some very specific goals set in our plan. And this is aligning to that. So it was nice hearing from PSC that their PSC work has actually been integrating those goals. And the individual works with each of the curricular items as they're rolling through our plan that we have, our multi-year plan. And so I think this aligns very, very well with what the community had spoken they wanted when we did our goal setting and mission and vision and the work that we're trying to do. So I think it's a very nice way not to have something completely out of left field, but something discontinuing and building on the work that we've learned how to do and getting better at doing. That is directly tied to what the community had asked us to do when we created that plan. So thank you.
Thank you.
I only have one, one follow-up question. Do we envision the task force to be thinking about what kind of other experts, maybe local experts, we can tap into? Is that kind of the thought process is that's the group of people that might determine who to reach out besides Dr. Marks?
Yeah, I definitely think that's part of the discussion. Since we already have our relationship with Dr. Mark, we wanted to continue that. He's coming back in October, but we recognize that we do have some, you know, local experts. When I reached out to the RESD to see what the plan was for this next year, she also mentioned, she didn't say a name, but she said she's got two consultants as well that are experts in this field to help guide the rollout.
I think one of the things the task force will also be able to do is look at districts across the state. This is a common topic of interest for many communities in our state right now. And so to be able to learn from what other districts are doing, that will be another important piece.
Well, not only that, but it's a great model. In the future, other things could crop up, right? And so we need a technique and a model to say, we have the curriculum, but how is it being applied? Are we doing it correctly? Are we doing it like we think we are? And then this is a good test for that, creating a model for that kind of deeper dive and making sure everything's the, as we think it should be.
Thanks again for putting this together.
We will continue to keep you updated as we move forward. So the next item under my report is the Yo and Yo auditing services for 21, 22, Ginger.
Yes, you have before you the annual engagement letter from our auditors, Yo and Yo, just kind of covering their scope of work for the upcoming audit. It covers, you know, not only the fact that they'll be auditing our financials and our federal programs, also our bond programs and our internal controls. This is, like I said, just an annual letter. It's informative only. No action is needed by the board tonight, but just an engagement letter, a long one.
Thank you, Ginger. And lastly, I just wanted to provide a summer program update for you all. I know I had someone say to me, why did I see Mount Pleasant Public Schools bus driving down the street yesterday? So just in case you're wondering, although balanced calendar programs did end last Thursday, we did also last week kick off our summer school programs. So our academic support programs are currently running at Ganyard, Pollin, Vowles, Fancher-McGuire and Mount Pleasant High School. We have just under 200 students enrolled in our K-5 programs. And we have right around 82 students, I'm sorry, 85 students that are enrolled in credit recovery programs at Mount Pleasant High School. We do also have a Mount Pleasant Middle School summer school program, but that will not start again until August. So there's a little bit of a break there. So, but all those programs are utilizing our buses. In addition, our PEAK program is up and running full this year. So PEAK is using buses for some of their field trips and their special programming and that kind of thing. We do have PEAK programs this summer at Vowles, Fancher and Pollin. We are also running our meetup and eat-up program. That is our food distribution program. So we are distributing meals to all community members, age zero to 18. Once a week on Wednesdays, families can pick up seven breakfasts and seven lunches for each child and their family. We do also provide free meals to any special education student up to age 26. So every other week at meal distribution, we will also be distributing Nutrition Club bags. That's a partnership that we continue with the Community Compassion Network. So this week is a week where we will have Nutrition Club bags. So the only week where we are not doing our food distribution is during the week of July 5th. So that July 5th is a Monday, so I guess July 7th would be the Wednesday of that week. We won't have that major food distribution. Because meals are still free and because we do start participate in the meetup and eat-up program, we are able to provide meals to all the students that are coming to summer school as well as the PEAK program. So we have a very active, very busy kitchen this summer as we're feeding students all over our community. So in addition to those programs, certainly we have our athletic open gyms, training exercises, activities that are going on. And then also good old-fashioned driver's training is happening right here at Mount Pleasant High School. So although we are quote unquote closed for the summer, it is really shaping up to be a very busy summer around the district. So you will likely see lots of movement and lots of vehicles from our fleet all around the community all summer. Any questions about summer programs?
I, I do have a question. I was wondering if we had on our website a place where if a parent wants to participate in some of these activities, and I'm particularly thinking of the athletic activities, they can find that out. I know some of it is posted on, on like boards of the schools or, but the online orders haven't seen those. And so I'm not sure if, if we currently have that location, but it would be nice to have spots for elementary and middle and high school where as a parent, I could say, hey, maybe my child is vaccinated now and can participate or I feel like it's okay now in X, Y and Z.
Sure.
And find that information.
I can, I can coordinate and put all the summer information together. I know we have the meetup, eat-up information there. And I believe the guidance for athletics is to contact the athletic department, but we can try to bring that all together. At, at some point, it will become sort of too late to sign up for some of the. At, at some point, it will become sort of too late to sign up for some of the academic supports, but to give folks a, a place to go, a landing spot, we can certainly do that on our website.
Thank you.
And that's all for my report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next is the requested financial reports. I'm Ginger.
Hi, I have for you the financial reports for general fund and special service funds, comparing for revenue and expenditures, comparing budget to actual for the month ending May 2020 and the month ending May 2021. For general fund, revenues are at 71% of budget this year compared to 71% of budget last year. Expenditures are at 76% of budget this year compared to 75% last year. So we're still right on target with our spending from, from prior year. For special service funds, athletics, revenue is at 0% this year compared to 12% last year, and expenditures are at 30% this year compared to 81% last year. This is the self-sustaining sports, this is hockey and prom, and we, we do have revenue coming in to cover those expenditures yet this year. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue is at 95% of budget this year compared to 90% last year, and expenditures are at 75% of budget this year compared to 80% last year. For the nurse testing program, we'll never have revenues in this program again. We're spending down fund balance, so expenditures, expenditures are at 3% this year compared to 8% last year. For the food services, revenue is at 76% of budget this year compared to 77% last year, and expenditures are at 59% this year compared to 80% last year. And for the school store, revenue is at 37% of budget this year compared to 99% last year, and expenditures are at 33% this year compared to 94% last year. For treasurer's report, general fund, on April 30th, we had a cash balance of $6.3 million. We had income in the amount of $3.2 million, and disbursements in the amount of $3.7 million. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $5.7 million. For the debt retirement fund, we had a beginning balance on April 30th of $568,000, revenue in the amount of $29,000, and disbursements of $193,000. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $404,000. And for the capital projects fund, we had a balance on April 30th of $2.8 million, a small amount of interest income, less than $100 there, and no disbursements for the month of April. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $2.8 million. And that's all I have for you. Next is correspondence. Over the last month, we have had correspondence that has all been entered into your board packet, packet. We have received that from Eric Chercover, Xanthah Karp, Harper Traumer Beardsley, Jennifer Scheizer, Seeley Bush, Bob Bush, Joshua Adams, Jennifer Dreven, Diane Steyer, Tobin Dennis, Amanda Eden Garrison, Lisa Wiley, Kayan Gilzendorf Alcentra, Amy Perchbacher, and Nicole Hegel and Kelly Fountain. Next up is the consent agenda. With the consent items, the first being the approval of the June 7th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is the financial with the approval of the bills. Is that, that is in your board packet? Is there a motion to have that pass?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next is a roll call vote for the MHSAA 2021-2022 resolution, which we heard earlier today.
Actually, and I think Mr. Conway has some additional information he'll share with us quickly. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, this is just the annual approval from the, from the board that you're aware of, that for us to participate in the MHSAA, there's certain rules, regulations that we will continue to follow. So this is an annual, hopefully yes, vote that we're alerting the MHSAA, that, that our school board and school district is very aware of the do's and don'ts of athletics.
Is there a motion for the MHSAA 2021-2022 resolution?
So moved. So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. So Courtney?
Dana Cawkin?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
That unanimously passes. Next is the donations.
You have two different donations in your board packet this evening. The first one is from Staples. Staples has donated 204 care packages that have hand sanitizer and tissues to the value of $1,020. That'll be distributed throughout the district. We also have a donation, an anonymous donation of $3,000 to be used by the staff and students at Gannyard Elementary. And we're asking that you accept those donations this evening.
Is there a motion to accept the donations from Staples and the anonymous donation to Gannyard Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes with much thanks. GRBS, the contract extension?
You have a memo in your board packet this evening, asking to extend the Mount Pleasant Public Schools contract with Grand Rapids Building Services. We are asking for a one-year extension. The increase in the contract is due to their proposed increase in wages for their employees. As I'm sure you have seen throughout the community, wages are going significantly higher, and they do believe that they need to increase their wages in order to be able to, to meet the needs of their employees. So we're asking that you approve this contract extension for one year through June 30th of 2022.
Is there a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next is resignations.
Good evening. I would like to ask the board to accept the resignations of Matthew Houck, Abigail Lewandowski, and Madeline Rybant.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations of Matthew Houck, Abigail Lewandowski, and Madeline Rybant?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we accept those resignations and wish best of luck on future endeavors. Next is new hires.
Yes, we are excited to bring on board the following candidates, Caitlin Bellinger at Fancher, or I'm sorry, Maguire Elementary, Alicia Dorsey for Fancher Elementary, Samantha Royce at MPMS, and Ashton Wargo at MPMS.
Is there a motion to approve the new hires?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we welcome those individuals to the district. Thank you. Next is the June amended budget resolution. Yes, I have for you the June budget revision proposal. This is general fund excluding tribal grants. In December, the budget was projected to contribute back into fund balance $461,447. We made a bunch of different adjustments, and I'll kind of run through them quickly so you can see how we get to the, the new proposed bottom line. We adjusted some tax revenue from December to June, the taxable value changes. So we adjusted that to match what our stated reports as well. We, there's some miscellaneous revenue adjustments, like facility rentals, transportation revenue, that type of thing that we adjusted. State aid, the biggest part of that was a Section 147 MIPSers increase over what we had proposed for in December. And then transfers in from other funds. So some other funds, like the Children's Learning Center Fund, the Food Service Fund, and the, there's one more, that's the self-sustaining sports, if they use our internal transportation. We sometimes have internal movement between those funds. So that changed a little bit. We also updated the expenses for Oasis Way. That changes twice annually based on student count, the fees that we owe that program, so we adjusted that. The ELL consortium was discussed actually last year when we proposed changes in that program. This is us joining a consortium, so that was added into the budget. Salaries and benefits, this is all of the movement and changes that have happened between December and now, people leaving, people coming in, insurance changes. This was the one and a half percent that was given after the December budget revision was accepted. So that came to increased expenditures, $491,000, you see on there. Pre-CTE, there was a, pre-CTE is not a bottom-line neutral program like the regular GI tech program. This, there was a teacher overload that was budgeted too high. So that and the retirement, like a worker's comp, was the majority of this adjustment here. And then some more miscellaneous, like printing, utilities, unemployment, dual enrollment, just a bunch of different miscellaneous expenditures throughout the district that were adjusted, came into that $26,000 line. So that brings us to a bottom line of projected to contribute back to fund balance, still $344,000. This is a really great number. Typically, we don't spend 100% of our budget, and I anticipate that being again this year. So this number hopefully will be higher than the $344,000. So thankful for all of the different grants that we've received this year to help pay for a bunch of different, you know, COVID expenditures and things like that, it really helped out. So the last slide, or the next slide here just shows you total revenue of $48.3 million, total expenditures of $48 million. So that brings us to that expected to contribute back $344,463. And looking at that as an expenditure, or as a percentage of our total expenditures, that's a 12.28% fund balance, so right in the target area, kind of. And I expect that to be higher, too. So I'm pleased, this was a, a lot of work, a lot of software issues, but we worked through it all. So ending up with this, this bottom number after the year that we've had, I think, is, is really good. Thank you. We heard about those software issues. We're happy that they came through for you. Is there a motion to accept the return of that money in the fund balance?
I have one question. Ginger, do these numbers include the summer school programs, or is that going to be in next?
Partial, yes. So we are receiving two grants for the summer school program. We've, we've already had one hit our state aid, so that is budgeted in here. We haven't had the next one hit yet, so that will be budgeted in New Year. It's, it's bottom-line neutral because we'll, it's a grant. So whatever we spend, we will be getting in in revenue. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Is there a motion?
So moved. Accept the amended budget for June.
Second.
And I believe this is a roll call vote. So Courtney?
Dana Cawkin?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
And next is the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget. Yeah, so continuing right along, you have another PowerPoint presentation there, slide presentation for new year budget. You see that June projected to contribute back, number right at the very top that we just talked about, $344,000 to the good. We increased the foundation allowance by $164,000, $164 per pupil, as we discussed here. I really think that might be low. Nothing still has yet been signed into law, so we, we have no idea what that number's going to be. But based on how positive the May consensus revenue estimating conference report was, we expect it to be higher than this. We're hoping it to be higher than this. But we like to be conservative, so we went with the $164 that was originally suggested that we use. That's an increase in revenue of $574,000. Now with that, I also had to change us back from the super blend. So this year, we were allowed to use a super blend for our student count, which was 75% of the blended count from 1920, and 25% of the blended count from 2021. That really benefited us this year with being down so many students. That really helped us not lose so much money. Next year, that goes away. So we're, we go back to 90% of the fall count and 10% of the previous spring count. That is a reduction in revenue of $477,000, going, changing back to the normal way we do our blended count. I also restored the 20% building budget cuts that happened in 2021. Those were never restored, and it's really hard for buildings to just get teaching supplies for their classrooms with that, with that reduction. So we, we did restore that moving forward, and then a bunch of different miscellaneous adjustments netted to $971. So the running total there is still contributing back $347,000. You just approved the GRBS contract increase. That was an additional expense of $108,000, as they want to give their staff a raise. That obviously has to flow through to us also. And then the biggest adjustment is the salary and benefit changes. So I adjusted the hard cap. We know what it will be starting January 2022, so I adjusted that prorated amount for how much we're allowed to pay for health insurance for our employees. I adjusted, I increased the retirement percentage. We know it was, the district has to pay 40, in 2021, it was 42.72% that we pay on every dollar for salaries into retirement. Moving forward, the next year, it's 43.28%. So we increased that. We rolled everyone up a step. We do this every year for budgeting purposes, to make sure that we're covering those increases that happen throughout the year. So when all those changes are said and done, we're looking, we're looking at projected to spend into fund balance $101,000. I think this will get better as we hear what our foundation allowance increase will be. But also the, the big unknown is what our student count will look like next fall. That's really hard to predict. We predicted flat since we predicted a lower foundation allowance increase. So it'll be interesting to see what happens as, as we move forward, but I'm pretty comfortable with this, this number here, because I, I really do think it will get better as we move forward. So that looks, that looks like a total revenue of $47.1 million, total expenditures of 47.2. This is lower than the total you saw in the June amendment we just approved, because a lot of our federal grants went away. So revenue and expenditures went away. Projected to spend into fund balance $101,829, which is a 12.26% of our total expenditure for our fund balance, which is still a fairly decent number. Are there any questions for Ginger? Is there a motion to pass the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget?
So moved. Second.
And this is a roll call vote as well.
Dana Cawkin?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
And that unanimously passes.
Ginger, thank you for battling our software system and all of the work that you've had to do.
It will get better as we move forward. And it's hard to, we're still in two different systems, our payroll's still running out of the old one. So it was a challenge, but it will get better, it will get smoother, I promise. Thank you very much. Next is the Mount Pleasant Education Association tentative agreement ratification.
In your board packets this evening, you have the ratification agreement from the Mount Pleasant Education Association. This is the Teachers Association. This is a one-year agreement, and we've specified the areas of adjustment to their master agreement, which we discussed in closed session a couple of weeks ago. So we're asking that you approve this tentative agreement this evening.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to pass the tentative agreement from the Teachers Union?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is the Administrator Association.
So the next, uh, note you have is a tentative agreement with the Mount Pleasant Administrator Association. This is a two-year agreement, largely because they're kind to us and let us juggle, so we don't have every contract up every year. So just a few adjustments within their agreement, and they are not represented by MEA. They are our only group that represents themselves. But we're asking that you approve this ratification for a two-year master agreement for the Mount Pleasant Administrators Association.
Any questions?
I, I do have a question. So the only changes is what's crossed out, right? Is that how I'm reading this?
I believe you're looking at, that to me looks like the Mount Pleasant, that's the Teachers Association.
Oh, so I need to go to the next one, I'm sorry.
So if you scroll down, so you'll see the highlights in yellow there.
And so if it's not- And so if it's not highlighted, it's the same?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we've only pulled out the sections of their master agreement that have any changes in it.
That makes sense.
Is there a motion to pass the Administrator Association agreement?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is the Transportation Agreement.
Our bargaining teams have been busy. The last memo is for the Mount Pleasant Transportation Association. We are asking at this point just for a 60-day extension of that master agreement. It's currently set to expire on June 30, and we would ask for your approval of extending that through August 31st so that we can continue to meet and negotiate the master agreement this summer. So we'll believe, we believe it will be able to come back to with more of a bargain contract by the end of the summer.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to pass the extension of the contract?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that unanimously passes as well. Next, we come to public comment, as we have in weeks past. I will go ahead and read the name. You have time to come up to address the board. Please state your name and where you reside in, and Mr. Oderkirk will let you know when your time is up. For those that might be new to attending, this is not a time that the board will respond to answers. This is a time for you as individuals to address the board for public comment. Net, or first up is Pat Bergy.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Bergy. I'm born and raised in Mount Pleasant with children in both public school and Sacred Heart Academy. I want to commend the board for your patience and professionalism as you've been both praised and berated by people from not only this community, but all over the nation the past couple of months. I am both encouraged and deeply troubled, but yet deeply troubled by the June 7th meeting where there was a robust discussion on CRT. Encouraged because I believe there's a movement by regular people to get more involved with their children's education. Troubled by the, what appears to be a non-transparent and misleading manner where CRT is currently being inserted into the public education curriculum. First, I want to unequivocally state that I love my country. I served in military for 25 years with three deployments covering 32 months in distant lands where we defended and befriended people of different color, nationality, and religion. I've seen death and destruction up close and witnessed the oppression of a populace by an evil ideology. I'm also named after my dad's best friend, a 19-year-old Beale City boy who died in a rice paddy in 1968 fighting communism in Vietnam. Never in my wildest dreams would I ever believe that I would be in a position up here opposing the roots of communism, being introduced in a positive light to school kids here in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. There were 30 individuals at the last meeting who spoke on CRT, 19 in favor, 11 opposed. But of the 19 supporting CRT, many were misleading, and they were educators. The description of CRT is teaching critical thinking or true history. Then I saw some bullet comments tonight where it also says teaching critical thinking. This game of words is false and deceptive, and only one speaker last week correctly stated that CRT is rooted in Marxism. And if you want proof, look no further than the book Stamped, a book currently being taught in English in classes in Mount Pleasant High School, as well as talked about the last meeting by several people up here. I read this book and was shocked that it is actually being taught in our schools. Phil Kruska will provide a more detailed analysis following my comments. But the truth is CRT is already starting to accomplish what Marxism, fascism, communism all have in common, which is to divide us, to eventually get us to hate each other. And this is probably the saddest aspect of CRT. We can teach the history of slavery and racism in the United States without attacking the foundations and values of American principles. And we should also teach the history of slavery in the world, as there is currently many countries and cultures where it exists today, which is very sad. Just stick to the facts and keep political agendas out of the classroom. We are all in this together, so there needs to be more transparency about the depth of CRT currently in our curriculum. I would request that the curriculum, the syllabus, required reading, suggested reading be made public for all the public to be able to see what is being taught to our children. I am here as a proud American who loves my country. I'm an ally to all. I willingly sacrificed 25 years of my life so that all of you have the freedoms and liberties and opportunities no other country in the world has.
I've had your three minutes.
But most of all, as a father who wants my children and grandchildren to have all the liberties that I've been blessed with as an American. Thank you.
Next is Phil Kruska.
My name is Phil Kruska, and I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. Pat Bergy wrote this that I'm going to read, and I agree with what he has written. Last meeting, Carleen Borstein Black, a professor at CMU with children in Mount Pleasant, stated regarding CRT that there was no connection to Marxism and never has been, and suggested opponents should seek out what is actually being taught, and that the link to Marxism is a dog whistle. Well, we did, and the book Stamped is currently be used, being used in high school English and was praised by Hannah Hamlin last meeting that her daughter had read it. The author is Ibram X. Kendi, also the author of How to Be an Anti-Racist. One of the predominant and celebrated characters in this book is Angela Davis, a Marxist and longtime member of the Communist Party USA from 1969 to 1991. She was twice the party candidate for vice president and is a recipient of the Lenin Peace Prize. And yes, that prizes in honor, in honor of Vladimir Lenin of the former Soviet Union. She formally left the CP USA in 1991, but currently acknowledges to have a relationship with the Communist Party. The book Stamped dedicates 28 pages to Angela Davis in a positive and celebratory light. By contrast, there are 20 pages dedicated to Thomas Jefferson, most if not all negative, and the only 10 pages to Abraham Lincoln, where his efforts to end slavery are minimized and qualified by the author. The final mention of Angela Davis is on page 247 in the closing pages of the book, wherein this progression of names starts with Cotton Mather, a late 1600 Puritan who the author credits with sowing the seeds of white supremacy. Then to Thomas Jefferson, author of the Declaration of Independence in 1776. Then to William Lloyd Garrison, a white abolitionist in the 1800s. Next is W.E.B. Du Bois, a civil rights leader in the early 1900s. The final name in this progression is Angela Davis, where her name is repeated, repeated three times for emphasis, as if she is who she, we should aspire to be. Please tell me how this is not a connection to Marxism. Abraham Lincoln, the president who saved the Union and issued the Emancipation Proclamation, or Martin Luther King, who led the civil rights movement, which resulted in the 1964 Civil Rights Act and 1965 Voting Rights Act, are excluded from this progression of names. There needs to be full transparency of the current curriculum and its content so our public knows what our taxpayer dollars are funding. This is unacceptable for our children to be taught an ideology that history and time has proven to be oppressive and anti-American. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Pratt.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Pratt. I'm from Mount Pleasant, Michigan. Two college professors at the last meeting in support, there were two college professors at the last meeting in support of CRT, but also supported, stated their support of the 1619 Project, with one CMU professor stating specifically that America was founded in white supremacy. This is flat out wrong, and historians have debunked this narrative by the 1619 authors and proponents. In fact, Black America is one of the greatest success stories of all time. If you don't believe me, then believe Walter Williams, author of Race and Economics, professor of economics at George Mason University, as well as being African-American. He states in his book, Black Americans compared with any other racial group have come the greatest distance over the, some of the highest hurdles in a shorter period of time. You see, of the estimated 12 million captured and boarded on ships, 1.5 million tragically perished at sea. Of the remaining 10.5 million, only an estimated 3% to 4% came to the United States. Between 350 and 400,000, the other 10 million went to South America and the Caribbean, with over 4 million alone going to Brazil. Fast forward to 2007, the year Race and Economics was published, Black America had a population of 40 million with a combined per capita GDP of 726 billion. This ranked Black America alone as the 18th largest county in the world by GDP. This is one of the several analyses Dr. Williams uses to illustrate the success of Black America. When updated with the latest World Bank data, the current Black America population of 42 million, they actually increase in rank to 17. Their success is precisely due to the foundation set in our founding documents, particularly in the Constitution and all its amendments. Just as important as our founding documents are, is our free markets, where this, where the means of production and its profits are based on private ownership, not state-controlled central planning. There is no other country, especially in those, in those countries where the other 97% of slaves were sent, where this kind of opportunity and freedom exists. Yes, our country has made mistakes. Yes, our founding fathers were imperfect men. Yes, the US, just like every other country in the world, has battled with bigotry and racism, but Black America is a story of how freedom and liberty leads to victory that absent our founding fathers' courage and wisdom would not have been possible any other, under any other form of government. The 1619 Project does not reflect the greatness of our country, nor the greatness of Black America. Thank you.
Terry Kuntz?
Good evening. My name is Terry Kuntz. I'm a 22-year resident of Mount Pleasant and have four children, all who became mine through adoption. The first being my wife's son, whose dad was killed in a car accident and lost his father, and three multiracial children, all have attended this school system. I currently have four grandchildren, all multiracial, Black, Native, and Asian. I'm also a Vietnam veteran and a Gold Star family, uh, family member. For those who are not aware what a Gold Star family is, is someone who's lost a family member in battle. My brother Gene was killed in Vietnam in 1968. I listened to the June 7th meeting and have serious concerns of the direction of our education, as many have said already. We need to have these curriculum and other detailed contents disclosed publicly. I, too, read the book Stamped and agree that it plants the seeds of Marxism, in my opinion. I believe we all understand this quote by Abraham Lincoln. It said, "The philosophy of the schoolroom in one generation will be the philosophy of government in the next." I was disappointed to see one of Mount Pleasant Public School employees address the board wearing a Black Lives Matter T-shirt. This leaves no doubt in my mind that there's a political agenda has entered the classrooms already. In fact, Black BLM was founded by three self-professed Marxists, and one of their stated beliefs is that they, quote, "Disrupt the Western prescribed nuclear family structure requirement by supporting each other as extended families and villages that collectively care for one another, especially our children, to the degree that mothers, parents, and children are comfortable," unquote. I can read that several times. It really doesn't make much sense to me, other than I think they're trying to tear away, tear down the family unit. And I'm sure the school district understands the importance of healthy family units in this district. Our country is by no means perfect. There is no perfect person. The only one that there was, was killed. But show me one that is. Neither history or English should be taught with a political agenda. There are countless examples through history where this has occurred and failed. As a taxpayer, but most of all, as a proud American veteran, I do not want material that supports or encourages the failed ideologies in the classroom. Marxism, Stalinism, Nazism, Communism, those are not values that the American people hold. The board, the schools, and the public need to work together to ensure our children are getting a balanced education, where they are not being used as tools of any political agenda. From Anthony Davis and James Hargan, this quote, "The sad truth is too, excuse me, the sad truth is too many Americans find freedom so uncomfortable and frightening that they welcome autho, 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 authoritarianism, excuse me." Our argument is over which kind do we want?
You've had your three minutes, could you please wrap up your comments?
The leftist variant, which culminates in Stasi-style snitch state, or the strongman version, of which every decision is made from on high, and I say neither one. Let us remember that over 1 million of our heroes gave their lives, men and women, for the freedom we enjoy today, and as Abraham Lincoln said in 1862, "America is the last best hope on earth." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Fountain.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fountain. I was interested in what the plan is for next year's school year for mask wearing and all the other precautions. I know the governor has lifted the mask mandates and precautions at this time, so are you going to be requiring a vaccination for staff and students to be enrolled into the next year? Or we need to know what we need to do for next year? I know there is a waiver, a non-medical waiver for students to, for the parents to sign for their vac, for them to not have vaccination to attend school at this point. So can the students still opt out at this point if they get the vac, or the waiver? I'm not sure. We'll have to find that out. Example, like for religious reasons or some other reason? This form is at the local health department, and vaccines are a recommendation and not law at this point. So, and I've also noticed the board members, some of them have masks and some don't. Are you all on the honor system, or did the other members show you their vaccine passports for them to take their masks off? With that, the same honor system should be implemented for the children next year and the staff going forward for next year. There isn't data at this, there's data at this time that we know that students are not as at risk as we thought last year. So, and at this point, 70% of the teachers and staff has been vaccinated, so their threat and the risk is low at this point. So it should be a choice for parents to choose not to, and not to be forced by the government mandate or by the school, or, and a lot of other states are open right now and have no mandates, have nothing right now. So I'm not sure why our state is still doing it. And I was wondering, for all the events in sports, are you only going to play sports that are only vaxxed and tested players? Or, you know, a lot of, a lot of the schools have dropped all their mandates and things. Are you still going to be able to play against? Are you still going to be able to play against them, or are you going to require them to have vaccinations and testing before you play them? That's a concern, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Bree Mogenberg.
Bree Mogenberg, Mount Pleasant. What is indoctrination? To ingrain and saturate a certain quality, point of view, or principle, usually partisan or biased, a discriminating opinion. So how does this happen? I ran into an article that explains how 97% of English teachers are Democrats and 3% are Republican. How 87% of math and science teachers are Democrat and 13% are Republicans. Do you see a problem here? A bipartisan board, but it's not bipartisan. So much so that I personally know conservative teachers that won't speak up because they're fearful of their job. Citizens and parents that wouldn't even speak here tonight, no matter how many times I asked them, because they're fearful, they're going to be called a racist. Take a second and notice the shirt that I chose. I feel this point was necessary. How would you feel if I were a teacher, wearing this as I represent my school and I teach? I know last board meeting, there was a teacher present that wore a BLM shirt. Imagine if I taught class with a mask that says, "I am heterosexual." I will admit, after the last meeting, I was actually pressured to join the trend. My mask didn't arrive in time. Peer pressure is a real thing, and your policies and procedures speak on preventing it with our students. And yet, staff are not only engaging in it, but promoting it to students. Students are pressured when you and teachers promote such beliefs as BLM, a political movement that supports to defund the police, LGBT, a movement that promotes and normalizes sexual expression. BLM, a move, I'm sorry, hold on here, which is not appropriate in school. Critical race theory, propaganda that promotes Marxism. All of these are liberal ideas. You are crossing a line that not only violates constitutional rights, but also the rights of the students that you speak of in your policies. Students have a right to feel comfortable, and they aren't comfortable when the school is promoting sex. In case you're not aware, sexuality by definition is the quality or state of being sexual. Let me say that again. Sexuality is the quality or state of being sexual. It is perverted to share your sexual interest or supports with students. Sex ed is the place for it, and for a child to participate in sexual education, they need parent permission. Parent permission. When my seventh grader comes home and is uncomfortable because she has to discuss sex in English language arts class, this is problematic. Period. We have principles in the curriculum to support abstinence. It is expected that teachers should not be promoting political statements, they should not discriminate, and they should not promote sexuality. Let me be clear, if you support abstinence, children do not need to know your sexual preference, and neither do I.
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
I'm almost done. Thank you. Teaching our children to think critically does not mean that teachers raise and promote critical issues with them, and surely not sex, and especially not ones that even adults have disparities with. Our schools in June of last year made a political statement, and in that statement, they had said, "Black lives do matter." That is not a statement that needs to be made unless that is made in a political science class. And if that is made in a political science class, I'm almost done, Tim. Thank you. If that is made in a political science class, you better end it by saying, "Make America Great Again." That, I want you to note, is disrespect. There's somebody else that was up here four weeks ago, and they went on for two minutes past. That will not be tolerated, and your board says it.
Next is Shannon Adams.
You're tough to follow, Bree. My name's Shannon Adams, and I'm from Mount Pleasant, Michigan. My son will be a senior this year at Mount Pleasant High School. Over the past year and a half, he has spent more time sleeping, closed up in his room, and alienated from friends than a teenager ever should. His GPA has declined. He's seen less value in education than he once did. He and all other children have missed out on so much, but finally, things seem to be getting back to somewhat of a new normal for all of us. He's also an athlete that's been subjected to weekly invasive COVID testing, against my better judgment. But what choice did we have? If he did not test or get vaccinated, he would not be allowed to play. How could I take more from him? He is a kid who has a low rate of becoming ill from COVID. There's no reason for him to be subjected to continued treatment and harassment. I'm aware of the new MDHHS, my safe schools recommendations, that are out so far for this fall. I can assure you that my son will not take the vaccine, and I refuse to subject him to rapid testing each week. You all have agreed that it's important to teach critical race theory to our children. However, your actions and decisions, if you support this, will actually segregate and divide our children, sorting them by vaccinated and unvaccinated, complete with different rules and standards for each group. Have you taken the time to consider the harm this might do to our school district, to our kids, to their social standings? You're just giving them ammunition and another reason to pick on and bully one another. And why? Most things are returning to normal, yet MDHHS wants to continue to subject our kids to this treatment. How can you support this, or why would you? Maybe for financial gains? Maybe there's a few teachers that are afraid, but if they've been vaccinated, they should be protected. So why force this on others? The community elected you to sit where you are to make decisions that impact our children in very sensitive ways in areas of their lives. I understand that they are very hard decisions. Please protect our kids from continued harassment, segregation, and disruption in their daily school lives. Don't allow different rules and treatment for each group of kids. We need to keep in mind that this is an experimental drug, and not everyone is comfortable taking it. We do not know the long-term effects on kids and young adults, and I refuse to force my child to take something he's not comfortable doing so. I also refuse to have him tested weekly. At what point did the state and the public school system begin to have more power over medical decisions for my child than me? At what point did I become incompetent in monitoring and managing his wellness? Additionally, there are many kids that are not vaccinated against a multitude of other viruses and illnesses. In 2016, 5% of kids who attended public schools in Michigan were unvaccinated. More recent reports predict the number is much higher in 2021. Will these children be subjected to twice-weekly testing for pertussis, measles, mumps, polio? Why not? There are serious diseases as well. I'm told we can exempt our kids from certain vaccinations. So what steps do I take to make this happen for COVID vaccination and testing that I do not consent to for my minor child? It's time to take a stand. Please consider the psychological damage you would allow to occur to our children if you support this going forward.
You've had your three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
I understand the decisions in the beginning, and do not fault you. We did not know what we were dealing with. You thought you were protecting the teachers and the kids, but we know more now. We know the kids are very safe and suffer minimal symptoms with COVID in a vast majority of cases. Before making the decisions, consider the facts and take a stand for our kids. In a world where everything is opening up and getting back to normal...
Please wrap up your comments.
You would, why would you consider continuing the testing? The pandemic is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Kruska.
Hello. Paul Kruska from Shepherd. I lived in Mount Pleasant for 30 years previously, and I had two sons that went through Mount Pleasant Public Schools, from young fives through senior. I'm reading tonight a letter from a Karen Bedenai, who is a New Mexico resident, and it has to do with the CRT, Critical Race Theory. I am a grassroots, American, Native American, Navajo Indian conservative woman that is running for governor in my state in 2022. I believe in our republic and our constitution. I also have thoughts on Critical Race Theory. I actually do know what it is deeply. I also know that I never want someone else to interject their outside voice into my cultural history, especially to my children. In support of CRT, if you support CRT from the propaganda side, you should definitely never question me nor battle me, for Native American Indians have endured so much and know so much about the history that inflicted us, and you should vote for me directly without cause, without merit, nor research, just because of my race. If you support CRT, you'd stop your questioning me and treat me like a permanent victim and give me everything you have because the land you walked upon was stolen and must be returned and paid for with interest. So leave New Mexico. If you support CRT, reparations, reparations, reparations. If you support CRT, label and pigeonhole the darker the skin. If you support CRT, see and judge every person's race and color first and foremost. Common sense against CRT, civility. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We allow Americans to treat people as Americans. Justice is blind. The American dream is blind. Hope, love, and charity as we grow, no matter where we came from. Therefore, as an American, it is my right to run for office. Office is not an entitlement to me because of my race. I have to work hard for it. Our republic is blind in our documents. Freedom is blind in our American dreams. Leave our culture, history to us, and let us heal without reopening wounds in new generations. My children will not care about their scars. They are clean and will walk forward as strong Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Bush.
I, for one, would like to thank CRT for enabling, you know, continued education and research and study by a lot, all sorts of people in our community, that they are looking into this so deeply and reeducating themselves on that. But I, for one, want to say that I am fully in support of this board and their committees and the staff and their culturally responsive curriculum review, and I hope that you guys find that there's more discussions that we can have on race and more discussion of the history of our great nation, and that we're not just going to talk about the good things that happened. I mean, Thomas Jefferson wrote the Declaration of Independence, but he also, you know, fathered children with slaves and all that intense. So we need to talk both of those things. Absolutely. And there's all, and I believe if we do that, we will reach our mission statement, and the mission statement being empower excellence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Diane Kuntz.
Good evening. My name is Diane Kuntz, and I'm a 22-year resident of Mount Pleasant. We have four children and four grandchildren. All but two went to this school system. I'm also going to talk about the book Stamped. There is more. Another subtle example of promoting Marxism is on page 151 of the book, where the author states that one of the champions of civil rights was inspired by Karl Marx and broke ground on a new idea, anti-racist socialism. Google anti-racist, I'm sorry, Google anti-racist socialism, and not much comes up. Not only does this book promote and glorify Marxism, it also omits or suppresses key information about significant events in history that leads the readers to believe white supremacists were the responsible parties. A prime example is how the book sets up the assassination of JFK. The author correctly states how JFK gave a landmark civil rights speech in June of 1963 that many segregationists at the time disagreed with. Then on page 171, the author discusses how Kennedy's approval numbers dropped after he launched an investigation into the September 1963 Birmingham, Alabama church bombing, where four beautiful children were tragically killed. One page later, it discusses his trip to Dallas, where he was trying to improve his polling numbers, but never made it back to the White House, leaving the reader to believe that his assassination had to do with his civil rights speech and proposed policies. There's not one mention of Lee Harvey Oswald, the actual shooter, who was a communist sympathizer and defected to the Soviet Union in 1959 and returned in 1962. On page 174, it mentions how when George Wallace ran for president in 1964, he allegedly received over 100,000 letters of support for his segregationist policies, mostly from the North. The author said it proved, quote, "painfully that everyone, the North and the South, hated Black people," unquote. Really, everyone? What about Andrew Goodman and Michael Schwerner, the two white New Yorkers killed, along with James Chaney by the KKK in 1964, when they were in Mississippi fighting for civil rights? Or what about the thousands of other white Northerners who participated in the 1964 Summer of Love, where white activists went into the deep south and lived with Black families to teach reading and register them to vote?
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. And the millions who supported them, or the thousands of Americans who would go to Vietnam, fighting in the jungles and saving each other on a daily basis regardless of color. This book is riddled with distortions, omissions, and completely lacks objectivity, and I do not want our children to talk these un-American ideologies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Heitman. Okay, thank you. Next is Kirsten Weber.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kirsten Weber, and I live here in Mount Pleasant, and I have three children in elementary school that are going through the district. And I'm also a professor at CMU, and I teach Critical Race Theory in some of my classes, and I've also published several journal articles that utilize this theory. And I fully support having open discussions, particularly with children, about this theory. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about my personal experience as a middle schooler when I was first introduced to this theory, and I also want to talk about my experience as a parent, having these conversations with my very small children, and also teaching young adults about this and other theories. When I was in sixth and seventh grade, I took an African American Studies class for both years. And in that class, we talked a lot about histories, and we talked about slavery, we talked about the Jim Crow laws, we talked about redlining, I mean, all sorts of parts of our history that are really sad and really difficult. One of the comments that I've heard throughout this discussion over the past few weeks with the school board is that this might make children sad or make them feel guilty. And I want to tell you that you're right. It might make them feel sad. It might make them feel sad, and it might make them feel guilty, because I felt sad, and I felt guilty about that. But I don't think that there's anything wrong with feeling sad or guilty about things that are actually wrong. What happened during that time period was problematic, and sadness tells us that there's a loss or that there's something that's difficult. And so having that reaction is a really natural reaction. And I think that it would be a really wonderful and really beautiful thing if we had teachers in this district who could have those conversations, and teachers in this district who were trained to be able to talk about that sadness in a way that makes it okay to be sad. So I think that that reaction is a good reaction to have. Second thing I want to talk about is my personal experience as a parent and a professor who has opened conversations, both at my house and then also in the classroom, about issues related to social justice, including racism, and sexism, and ableism, and ageism, and heterosexism, and other forms of discrimination. And what I've found, both at home and in the classroom, is that by and large, the two results that I see are that these kids, my kids, my kids in the classroom, they learn to be more empathetic. And I think that's a cornerstone of education, is to listen to other people and try to understand them and try to feel what they're feeling. I mean, that makes us good humans. The second thing that I see is it does help with critical thinking. It helps people to see other ideas. You know, what I've heard tonight is people are really afraid of Marxism and socialism. And what I would say as a critical thinker is, ask yourself why? Why do those things make you really scared? If critical race theory is rooted in them, why are you afraid of them? And what does that really mean? I mean, that's what we want people to do.
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you very much. So in conclusion, I would say there's a lot of benefits to talking about race and other forms of discrimination, and I think what we can hope for is a community that allows us to have those conversations and supports the empathy and the growth and the critical thinking that can come from those moments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol Sobieski-Gall.
I'm Carol Sobieski-Gall, resident in this district for 40 years. My story is the same as many in my generation with alternate names and details. My grandparents were all part of the 60 million immigrants as young adults in the early 1900s. My grandfather served in the U.S. Armed Forces in World War I and became U.S. citizens upon honorable discharge from service. They raised their families in the Detroit area. My parents' generation spoke both Polish and English, which they learned in school. At home, they learned about their history, including the Holocaust, and experienced Polish culture, traditions, and ethnic foods which they also shared with us. Their older brothers served in World War II, defending what they called "the old country." Imagine your own family members deployed to defend your homeland overseas. My own father left high school to serve in Korea. He eventually became a tradesman earning a journeyman's card. He raised his family in a tiny house in metro Detroit. We remember the rioting in Detroit and the curfews that we were under. Our schools were part of the desegregation plan. Population surges were handled with split sessions in school buildings, so there could be two different shifts of students and teachers daily. Our subdivision experienced boundary changes, which caused me to attend three different junior high schools in four years, and I never moved. Our school millage was not passed, and all sports and extracurricular activities were canceled for my senior year. Because of all this, we learned to be flexible, resourceful, persistent, and united. I was happy when my own children, as students of Vowles Elementary, had multicultural experiences. Many of their classmates had parents that were international professors at CMU. Parents openly shared their own traditions, cultures, and yummy foods at classroom celebrations. My children also attended family and religious celebrations and events of their classmates. They received a quality education, a well-rounded cultural experience, and embraced the cultural variety of their friends, finding them fun and interesting. We don't have to teach tolerance, if instead we genuinely get to know one another, seeking to understand rather than to be understood. It was my grandfather's dream that his grandchildren would attend college even though his own children did not graduate from high school. He had high aspirations for us. A few of my generation did go to college, but most of us did not. My own children will be college graduates. It will be the third generation of American-born descendants that accomplished my grandpa's dream. He proudly handed my generation a baton which was representing his new country, the United States of America, a country that was growing, changing, developing, and steadfast, one of opportunity for education that offered hope for future generations. I question the representation of the baton that I'm handing to my own grandchildren. Are we going doing the best that we can do to hand off a baton of value to this generation? It is our responsibility to empower them to succeed. Education is the key to the success, which is why we are here tonight with passion. We care about our kids and their future, and the future of this great country that our own family members have sacrificed to defend, including my own son, who is presently active duty in the Air Force and heading to Turkey in November. What seeds are we planting? What will we be harvesting in years to come? We must be careful and intentional.
You've had your three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
We must be careful and intentional in our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kiodini.
Hi, I'm John Kiodini. I spoke to you last meeting. At the end of that meeting, it gave me a pause, emotional it was, and wow, it was really unique. It had me thinking, I listened to the high school kids, and it had me thinking about my own experience growing up. I was born and raised in Detroit, on the east side, grew up on the east side, went to parochial schools all my life. I put a tie on in kindergarten, I took it off when I graduated from high school. Had nuns teach me in elementary, and I had all-male teachers. I went to a Catholic all-boys school. Went to college, I majored in literature, and in 1968, I started teaching at Northwestern High School in Detroit. It's my hometown, that's where I wanted to be. And my first, I can never, I still remember my first day as a teacher, walked into that classroom, and to my, I couldn't believe the fact that my students couldn't read. So, at the end of the school year, I enrolled back at Wayne State and got a master's in reading. And for the next decade, I taught Romano reading in Detroit public schools, I taught Romano reading in Greenville Public Schools, and I taught Romano reading and was the reading consultant at Elmo Public Schools when I got pink slipped. I taught 13 years, only been at Elmo for two. Total fine removed, and so about 20 some of us got pink slipped. I changed careers, all that while I've coached. When I was back in Detroit, I was blessed to have a first-year teacher, whose name was Richard Wright, not the author, who had graduated from Tuskegee Institute, and we became close friends. And he would ask me if I had read this book or that book by Richard Wright or Ralph Ellison, and I'm like, no, who are they? Okay. And all of a sudden, I started reading black literature, and I got turned on to the Harlem Renaissance, and, 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 and. And then I thought, you know what? My students, who are black, every child in that school was black, couldn't read those same books. And then as I got older, you know, I thought, in fact, the other night I was thinking, you know how, when I was in elementary school, the nuns would talk about manifest destiny, like it was some kind of a religious experience? And we all know it's not a religious experience, okay? But what did I do? Well, I picked up a couple of books, okay? Empire of the Summer Moon, I encourage you to read that. Bury My Heart at Wounded Knee, if you can get through that book, I tried to reread it, and I can't, it's too emotional. I learned about the truth about what's going on or what went on with Native Americans. All of you know how to read, and we give a lot of lip service to being critical. If you are able to be critical, and the only way you're able to be critical is be able to have knowledge.
You've had your three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
And knowledge is reading. I will do that right now, sir. I looked at the aggregate local assessment, Mount Pleasant SAT total percent of students that meet or exceed benchmark, high school. 15, 16 school year, 45.9; 16, 17, 40.4; 17, 18, 40.8.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, and here's the last one. These are your goals. These are my goals, these are all of your goals. All students at Mount Pleasant High School will be proficient in reading according to state standards and grade level content. All students at Mount Pleasant High School will be proficient in writing. All students at Mount Pleasant High School will be proficient in mathematics. All stakeholders at Mount Pleasant, here's my last comment. I want you, number one, and you've heard this word too many times tonight, I want you to be transparent, no surprises.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, and number two, I want you to tell me and everybody here how CRT helps us achieve those goals in English and math and reading. Amen.
Thank you. Next, Andrea McKinn.
Hi, I'm Andrea McKinnney, Mount Pleasant. This meeting, I want to offer my assistance for your understanding the use of the COVID test. As community, we don't want to place all the burden on you, the board members. We will help you gain knowledge, which is teamwork, but know that as an elected board member representing our community and charge of decision-making to create a positive learning experience for our area families, it is imperative for you to be well-informed and responsive to the wishes of parents. So I will help you by providing research on topics I bring up. This responsibility then becomes yours to review. So half of your work is done for you. We know from the release of Anthony Fauci's 5,000 emails, we are at war. It's not like any war before. We were biologically attacked with a bioweapon from an adversary country. Our school activities were regulated by COVID testing last year. This year poses as an even bigger threat to freedom. The discussion of unvaxxed children having to endure COVID testing is akin to wearing a star on your sleeve as a Jew in the World War II Germany. It is also a violation against federal HIPAA laws. The PCR test was never designed to isolate a virus. It picks up fragments of virus, even if leftover from a previous cold. There were no regulations about how to run the test in the labs until recently, which created thousands of false positives. The test swabs contain ethylene oxide. There is danger to using swabs close to the blood-brain barrier. If a country will release a bioweapon such as COVID-19, what will they put on their nose swabs and mask? Who makes the nose swabs and masks? I will email you information about the failures of the PCR test, which we are making decisions on. The info comes from many sources, mostly doctors. Thank you in advance for your effort to become informed and to be true advocates for our community.
Thank you. Maureen N. Eke.
Good evening, I'm Maureen N. Eke, and I live here in Mount Pleasant. I don't have a kid who has gone to school, any of these schools. I pay taxes that support this school. I teach at CMU and faculty in English. I was here two weeks ago. I listened to a whole lot of things that people have said. I want to again commend the board for your patience and for your willingness to listen to us. So thank you very much. This has been a tremendously traumatizing year for you, I believe, and for all of us. Honestly, I am really trying very, very hard to understand how some people arrived at the conclusion that critical race theory is a threat. What is it threatening? Your sense of yourselves, white privilege, your understanding of a particular history that doesn't include the history or stories of other people? Or is it just simply a tool, like a key, that opens up the door that says, let's ask these critical questions? Prepares our students to ask those critical questions about race and racism, and how they function, and why they function in particular ways? Please, please, let's stop rewriting history. Stop trying to convince people that slavery was good because only 16 Africans were first brought here. No. I am an African. People were taken from my community. Slavery did not help. It hasn't helped. The fact that we have to wait, African-Americans have to wait or plead and work every so often to say, let's please honor those amendments to the Constitution, three of them, 13th, 14th, 15th. Every so often, and you want to tell me we don't want to talk about why they have to do that? What does that mean? The fact that Native Americans had to wait till the 70s to practice their own religion? Hello? And you want to tell me that we should not be asking these questions? Oh, by the way, how many of you here drink coffee or eat chocolate? Have you ever asked who produces them? The cotton that make up your fabric, your clothes? Do you ask those questions? We're talking critical race theory. I take students, American students, to South Africa, predominantly white students to South Africa. When we get there, I want to tell you, they are shocked at what they see, and they're shocked at the fact that there is so much information about them, not just the Africans, not African-Americans, that suddenly, oh my God, here we're dealing with race relations in South Africa, which is very much like what is happening here in the United States. Do you know what they said to me when they come back? That has helped me understand what is going on. I did not have the opportunity to talk to people in the U.S. I do have your students who are upset that the school system did not prepare them enough for the world that they are going to encounter. And it is a world that is global, that is changing, that is different. I'm going to back up. So thank you for acknowledging Martin Luther King and citing him, but refusing to acknowledge that the very thing that you like about him is the thing that you're challenging right now. Critical race theory is not associated with Marxism. It started before Marxism, which originates in the 19th century. Get the history right. So thank you.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. Next is Alana Kailish Shin.
You can leave.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Next is Tara Leonard.
I live in Mount Pleasant. I, again, didn't prepare anything, I just listened. I did find it interesting that adults can't even sit in a room and keep their mouths quiet while this is being taught, so maybe that's something to think about as well when we're going to teach this to children who are, you know, peer pressure and bullying and all of that, when there are women behind me booing another woman talking, so that was interesting. The other thing that I find really interesting is that, maybe some of you don't know, that the Michigan Health Department has, came up with a program called the Michigan Safer Schools that they are wanting to implement into the school system for children. I'm unclear of the ages. I thought that I saw 10 to 19, but I'm not sure to be, if they are not vaccinated, to be COVID tested twice a week. So I think the critical race theory is at everybody's forefront, but that is the thing that is most scary, I guess, to me. My son, I have three kids, I go, well, my stepson just graduated, but I asked my son, what is the reason that you wouldn't want to be tested for COVID if you had to do this? And he said, well, because I'm not sick. And I just thought that that was such a simple statement, and we're talking so much about critically thinking, and... And if we're critically thinking about giving tests twice a week to children, why don't we critically think, well, they're not sick, so why would we even force that on them? I asked my daughter the same thing, and she said, my body, my choice, which was a different spin that I thought of, especially with a girl, a young girl, we're talking about, you know, choices that you're making with your body, and no means no, and all of these different things we've talked about since she was a little girl. And now, if she says no to a recommended test that she doesn't want to take, it might be implemented anyways, which is just another thing to think about. My son was quarantined three times last year. He was supposed to be isolated for 42 days, self-isolated, what the Health Department and the school told me. He needs to stay by himself, not have any contact with anybody, not go anywhere, for 42 days within a four-month span. So that's over a month of, he would have just had to been sitting by himself, not talking to anybody or seeing anybody, and he wasn't sick. So obviously, if we have these tests implemented, then there are going to be more quarantines, and more self-isolation after a year when these kids were already isolated enough. Another thing that I found interesting was when the whole sports got put on hold, and the whole let-them-play movement, I didn't hear anything from the schools. I didn't hear them fighting for sports, and we saw those numbers, seniors were 41%. That's a huge population of the school, of each grade. And I didn't hear anything from the school board, I didn't hear anything from the schools to let them play. That was my son's livelihood, that's all he wanted to do was play basketball. And instead, I got several, or I guess a few, emails inviting my children to be part of the Critical Gender and Sexuality Alliance.
Please wrap up your comments.
So I would just like to make sure that the school board and the schools have the kids' best interest in their forefront, get down to real critical thinking of what the best thing is for each of our students. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Amy Ford.
Hello, I'm glad to hear about the curriculum review. I believe that all of our children and youth in our schools deserve to see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Research shows that diversifying the curriculum has the potential to build empathy across differences, and make visible the diversity within groups. In contrast, a Eurocentric curriculum sends the message that only white perspectives, experiences, worldviews, and lives matter. And as a parent of a child in the Mount Pleasant schools, I'm eager for her to learn about people who are different, that will help prepare her for the world. I'm glad to hear that this curriculum review will build on the work of the PSC. And in moving forward, I'm eager for the task force that is assembled to include stakeholders from the student body. And I hope that the body of the task force will reflect the demographics of the student body as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Eric Scherkover.
Thank you. I'll just set a timer here, since I get the sense that, yeah. I didn't prepare any remarks, but I thought I would just, well, wing it. I am deeply disturbed by much of what I've heard tonight. Before I, well, I'd like to say first of all, that it saddens me that you, the board, and obviously the teachers in the school system are caught in the crossfire of some sort of cultural war that's unnecessary. To me, the idea of, just in terms of, in looking at your presentation of the culturally responsive curriculum, I see nothing wrong with it. I think it's great for us to put ourselves in other people's shoes, view things from a different perspective. I know, and I'm sorry, I forget your name, the university professor who talked about critical race theory, but I think that's more the purview of post-secondary education. I don't think critical race theory is actually something that's ensconced in our current public school system. So a lot of people are railing against something that isn't happening. So again, to me, sort of a manufactured crisis, if you will. I have a 14, my Eric Scherkover, sorry, I live here in town, nine years. I have a 14 and a 16-year-old, 14-year-old son, 16-year-old daughter. They have educated me many times about the things that I have said and done wrong, in terms of my response to diversity. They've taught me to be a better person, and those lessons can be pretty hard. History is messy, and hard lessons are sometimes a bitter pill to swallow. But you come away from those lessons a better person, even though if, at the moment, you really wish your 16-year-old, or your 14-year-old, wasn't schooling you. But they have a certain wisdom. And I'd also like to say, on a personal note, with respect to COVID, the testing, the vaccination, equating that with wearing a yellow star on your shirt in Nazi Germany is profoundly offensive. You don't even have to be Jewish to find that offensive, but I happen to be. So I thought I'd just say that. Thanks for your time.
That concludes the citizens' request to address the board, and now we move on to the Board of Education discussion. Does anyone have anything to discuss tonight? Okay, none being said. I would just like to mention that the month of July is one of the months that we only have one board meeting. So that being said, our next board meeting will be on July 19. And we will be having it here still. It will most likely be here, but it will be announced where the location is, and you can check the website for the location in the future. With that being said, thank you for attending tonight, and I hope everyone has a good evening. I call this meeting adjourned.